This time I'd like to call to order the Norristown Municipal Council meeting of Tuesday, June 6, 2023 to order. Can I have a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, if I have a roll call, please.
Rebecca Smith.
Here.
Rashad Bates.
Here.
Tiffany Henley.
Here.
Dustin Queenan.
Here.
Lauren Hughes.
Here.
Heather Lewis.
Here.
Thomas LaPera.
Here.
Can I have a motion to approve the previous minutes?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Eyes have it? We did not have an executive session tonight. Madam Vice President, any announcements?
Yes, we do have a few. Oak Street Youth Basketball Association Summer 2023 season is open for registration. Players, both boys and girls, from ages nine to sixteen, forty-five dollars a player. When is the last date of register?
June seventeenth.
June seventeenth, so registered by June seventeenth. For the Oak Street Basketball League that will run from, what, July?
Sort of beginning of August.
July to August. And on Saturday, June seventeenth, there is a three-on-three basketball competition and talent show for middle and high school students, co-sponsored by Rotation Records. So that's free to the community. The three-on-three basketball tournament is free to the community. There'll be food, prizes, entertainment, special guest judges, and performances by the SRC Idol winner. There is also our Juneteenth celebration that will happen on Monday downtown Norristown. And that's all I have for announcements. Does council have any other announcements?
Yeah, no one.
Council members.
Norristown Library has a summer for reading, so bring your kids to win prizes for reading books and attend the programs. And June seventeenth from ten to two is Big Truck Day also at the Norristown Library.
Any other announcements? Seeing none. Before we move into public comment tonight, I'd just like to say a few words. I would like to just clarify a news article that came out that kind of misrepresented my positions on a very serious issue and crisis. First and foremost, I never had a plan to bus homeless people to Villanova. That would be immoral, inhumane, in so many other ways. I did, however, out of frustration, speak about how I would protest myself and bus some of my friends and constituents that are frustrated with the situation to Villanova to sleep out there to see how long it would last before the police stopped us. And I don't think it would be that long before they did. Now, I am not anti-homeless or anti- poor or anti- trying to start a war with poor people or I believe in housing, in funding housing, you know? I have compassion for people with mental illness, which, by the way, the state hasn't funded in ten-plus years. I have, you know, volunteered my time at places like the Patrician Society. Myself and other politicians have done food drives in Norristown to try to stop hunger and things of that nature. I've been in full support of affordable senior living at the old Montgomery Hospital, which we have a waiting list for. And, you know, so I just want to say first and foremost, I'm with you. And Mike Kingsley and me sat down before this meeting and talked about how, you know, whether the paper portrayed it this way or not, we're on the same team. I have an issue, you have an issue, and we're just trying to solve it two different ways. Now, I said I'm not anti-homeless. However, I do not believe that we can sit here and let outside forces try to socially engineer Norristown into being a place where all the undesirables that have to go on in a community like social services and methadone clinics and drug rehabs and homeless shelters have to be in Norristown or Pottstown. Because for far too long in this country, not just here, in this entire country, these things get placed in black and brown communities where voter turnout is low. Because politicians know that there's not going to be any pushback. Okay? Now, since I got on council four years ago, Madam Vice President here has been on council for eight years, and we've been talking about the same thing over and over again. Homeless has increased since both of us been on council. Now, some of that has to do with the pandemic, some of that has to do with the flood, whatever it has to do with. We've been asking for help from our county, from our state officials, from anybody that would listen for four years for me, eight years for her, and various other times with previous councils and everything else. Now, part of me is, I'm exhausted, but part of me is glad that this conversation has gotten to the point where it has now, and we have the attention, we have the news people here, we have politicians calling me and reaching out now, saying, what do we have to do to help this situation? We've got private companies reaching out, saying, what can we do to solve this issue? And I'm thankful for that, because we've only been asking nicely for eight-plus years. Now, like I said before, I'm not anti-homeless, but I also do not believe that a homeless encampment, especially some of the ones that we have here that operate as pretty much open drug markets, should be able to continue to operate. And a statement was made to me that, well, you know, all of Norristown's open drug market, Oak Street, Green Street, Cherry Street, wherever, they sell drugs there too. Well, yeah, but we don't have the resources here in Norristown to address the issues on Oak Street and Green Street, because our services are going to encampments that when they get in a fight with each other, the tent burns down. Our fire department's out there, two, last week, when two people were, got sucked into the river, and the service, all of our services were tied up on that call, two homeless people in the river, all of our fire services tied up there, and then a fire breaks out on Chain Street, and we have to rely on other communities to come put that fire out. That's not fair to our constituents. It's not fair to the families and the generations that have lived here for a long, long time, that have seen this problem grow. So I'm here, and I'm glad everybody else is here too. I'm looking forward to your public comment. I'm looking forward to, after your public comment, if you would give Kevin your name, number, email address, Kevin's right there, to help us in this situation. Because we need help. We simply don't have the resources. Every single year, year after year, we face a two-and-a-half to three-million-dollar budget deficit. We have social services and county properties, we lose out on two-and-a-half to three-million dollars worth of tax revenue each year. So now that everybody's here and hearing this, now that all the politicians want to be involved, help us. We can only do so much with the budget constraints that we have. If you want us to do more, let's get some funding here. If you want us to do more, let's rally the state to fund mental health, because they haven't done it in ten years, to have fund drug addiction, because they haven't done that in a while, okay? This issue is more than just affordable housing. The people that are in these encampments, some of them are severely mentally ill, and they need help. Some of them are severely addicted to drugs, and yes, they need help, okay? But it cannot be Norristown alone. It has to be everybody pulling together. I need all sixty-two townships, municipalities, and boroughs in Montgomery County, which is the second richest county in the state, to pull together and pull their weight. Because we're frustrated, we're sure-as-hell broke, and we just need help. Okay, so I'm glad everybody's here, I look forward to your public comments. We are going to hear everybody that signed up. Solicitor Sean Kilkeny is going to read off the rules of public comment, and then we'll start.
Thank you very much. The rules of public comment come from a resolution of Norristown Council from 2005, just so everybody understands the rules. The president of Norristown Council shall preside over the public meeting and all public comment and shall enforce the following protocol. The president shall recognize individuals who wish to offer comment. There shall be two instances where the citizens make comment. First, they comment on an agenda item, provided they do so, time provided for the agenda item, and they should follow the procedures in all subsequent paragraphs. Second, there shall be a period at the end of the council meeting where citizens may bring up points not on the agenda, provided they follow procedures in all subsequent paragraphs of the resolution. For purposes of this meeting, all the public comments going to be in the beginning. If you have, want to comment on an agenda item, that's great. If you want to comment on what's been in the paper or anything else, that's great too. The clerk of council shall provide a sign-up sheet for citizens' comments prior to the meeting, which was distributed. The president shall require that anyone desiring to speak during any citizen comment period indicate on the appropriate sign-up sheet his or her name, address, and topic or topics to be discussed. Person speaking during citizen comment shall have three minutes to make their comments, an additional, so three minutes per comment period. If you have two different subjects, that can be extended up until five. The president shall control the three-minute period. The president shall rule out of order scandalous, impertinent, redundant comments or any comment that discernible purpose wishes to disrupt the conduct of the business in the meeting. Municipal council is not required to respond to questions, challenges, or inquiries during citizen comment. The municipal solicitor may, shall keep the time and warn the speaker when he or she has thirty seconds remaining on their allotted time. And everything else just really mirrors the Pennsylvania sunshine law, so those are the rules for comment, so everybody understands. As municipal solicitor, I'll keep the clock. Obviously, a lot of people have made a lot of effort to come out this evening. I know Norristown Council is very appreciative, but we would ask that, especially after the first set of comments, we would ask that if you're going to comment, please add something new to the debate related to this, if possible, after a while, because I know there's a lot of people here, a lot of people may be expressing the same sentiment, and I'm sure you will be heard. So we'd ask, you know, after the first couple speakers, if it's redundant, we would ask that you try to add something new, not say the same exact thing every time. I think council may get the impression, okay?
And just to note again, Kevin, we'll be taking names, numbers, email addresses, so that we can continue the conversation. We want to hear your solutions, because everybody knows what the problem is. We need solutions. So with that, Madam Secretary.
One second. Can we make some space for, I think there's some people in the hallway that would like to come in. I know we do have some chairs that might, we have some extra chairs around the table if we can make some space for folks to come in. There's some chairs up here.
Madam Secretary, could we start?
Chip Waters.
Good evening, everyone. Here, Waters, Apple Street. This is a report from the Citizens Leadership Academy. A while back, Norristown, and you can thank Kevin, who was the emcee, had an opportunity for everyone to learn what goes on in local government. And because I've been around here for almost eighty years, I got no place to go and I come to these meetings. So when I was done with the academy, I was asked what department I would like to volunteer for, so I said Public Works. All right, this is the report. First of all, the, this is for Vietnam veterans. They're having their meeting, June fifteenth, seven p.m., Jeffersonville Firehouse, School Lane, West Arm Township, this is for all out there in TV land. And other things, seeing all you people who are here, I'm kind of concerned that there might be some homeless veterans out there that aren't getting the attention that they need. That's another reason why we've got to have as many veterans as we can get to this meeting, because there's resolutions that need to be done to help us. The other thing is, is that I had volunteered for the Adopt a Spot program that Norristown had, Keep Norristown Beautiful. And I was kind of concerned, because my years at the telephone company riding around, seeing these buildings suddenly become boarded up. So what I thought to do was, I would do an inventory of all these buildings and start to do some research, because I thought maybe there could be some help for the people, you know? I know the taxation of the schools could have possibly driven some people out of their homes. That's another thing that aggravates me as a senior citizen. But been coming here, I don't know whether you guys have watched the TV show or not, but I've been coming here since I graduated, trying to do things good for Norristown, and I figured that the most thing I could do would be to try to keep Norristown beautiful. Now, one of the interesting things is about these meetings is, this is public comment, so you can't ask questions, but there is a way of asking questions, and that's the right-to-know request form. So looking into the records of some of these properties that I know darn right and well have been there for years, some of them a quarter of a century. Who's responsible for the accuracy of Norristown property records? Why does the property at fifteen West Oak Street show zero appraised value and zero taxes? See, that's the thing. I got to pay seven thousand dollars a year in school taxes, and I know that I could improve my property if I didn't have to do that, especially because I live in a floodplain. So I will present this to Mr. Crennel. And that's the procedure. And anybody who wants to ask questions, get them in writing, that's the man.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. Thank you. Mike Kingsley.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mike Kingsley. I've been a resident here in Norristown for eight years. I am also the director of the Coalition to Save Lives, which is a nonprofit Christian outreach organization. We do outreach here and all over the United States. Before Norristown, I was in Concha Hocken for twelve years, so I've known the area quite well. And I hail from upstate New York. In a small town that I kind of think of these days is Mayberry, when I was growing up. It was a really small town, five thousand people. And I'm going to read a little bit, because, not to remember what I wanted to say, but so I don't go too far off course here. You know, it was a small town that had two police cars, eight police officers, tree-lined streets, we played baseball in the summer, football in the winter, kind of an idyllic place. And I was there this past weekend, because my mom has Alzheimer's and dementia, at least, and I was there to take care of her. And I came out of the local version of Wawa, it's a Storch's ice cream shop, and there was a couple about in their thirties with a shopping cart full of their stuff. So I stopped to talk to them, as I always do, and Ben and Ashley were their names, and they were asking for money for something to eat. So over breakfast, I got to know a little bit more about them, and I actually grew up with Ben's mom. She passed away a couple of years ago, and they've been homeless ever since. They lived in an encampment of about five tents, a small town, between the creek and the railroad tracks. So it really brought home to me that this isn't a Norristown problem. It's not a Montgomery County problem, it's a countrywide problem that everybody's trying to figure out. We are, Norristown's not alone in struggling with homelessness. It's a nationwide problem.
Thirty seconds, Mr. Kingsley.
Okay. So we can argue about crime, we can argue about expenses to the city, we can argue about affordable housing, but let's figure one place to start. One place to start is to make a dent. We're not going to solve this problem, because no one else has. But let's make a dent in it by starting with one thing: love. Let's love these people because they're people. And I'm not talking just about the homeless people, but about the guy next door that his house is falling apart, and his grass is grown because he can't afford a lawnmower. The homeless, the poor, let's love them, because they're our mothers, fathers, brothers, sisters, cousins. Let's just love them, and let's start the solution next. Thank you.
Michael Bort.
Hi, council. My name is Michael Bort, and I am from, originally from Philadelphia, PA. Lived in Norristown for seven, going on eight years with my wife, Ann Bort. And I am a recent pastor here in Norristown, Pennsylvania, and our church is called Christ Supreme Church of Norristown, and we're looking to be a part of the solution to the problem, not the solution, but part of the solution. And what I mean by part of the solution is this, right? Is that a few months ago, we had some college students come up and walk through Norristown, walk through Marshall Street, and they loved it, right? You know? But one thing they loved was when we went to the tent community. And what they loved about the tent community was this, that like we were able to talk to the people, you know, we were able to get their names, know who they are and stuff, you know? We were able to buy things for them, you know, but get to know them. Now, again, my name's Michael Bort, the church that we belong to is called Christ Supreme Church, I am the pastor of the church. One thing that we're doing in the summertime, we have a street fest going on at the Trade Street Park. We just recently got permission to have the street fest at the park, and we would love to connect with some of the council members, some of the, you know, the police, the fire chief and all that, you know, to see how we can reach the community, you know, and love on the community as well. And again, my name's Michael Bort, I would love to connect with anyone in the community to see how we can, to answer some of the problems here, but also, you know, to figure out what we can do to be part of the solution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Schiller.
Hi, council and everyone else. My name's David Schiller, I'm an attorney in Norristown, I'm on the five-hundred block of Sweet Street. Behind my building is the Hospitality Center, which feeds homeless during the day. The reason that I'm up here is just to express that the homeless problem impacts business people in Norristown, myself included. It's very difficult to have clients come to the office and not be, not have certain concerns as they do come to the office to visit. Our neighbors, Kane Q, which is an attorney's office a couple doors away, moved out of Norristown, they moved to Blue Bell earlier this year. It's thirty-four attorneys that are not eating lunch and paying taxes in Norristown. Why did they move there? Because they had people that were sleeping in their parking lot, and most recently had somebody overdose in their parking lot and decided that Blue Bell was a better environment. I'm not part of their firm, and I don't speak for them, other than to say that if things aren't better for business people, business people will leave Norristown. Going along with that, the taxes that they pay, the income tax, the real estate taxes, et cetera. I've been here thirty-four years, since nineteen eighty-nine, practicing in my office, and over that period of time, things have gotten worse. So I just hope that there is a solution. There certainly isn't the sentiment to be anti-homeless, it's how together can we work to resolve the problems, because the business people that are left in Norristown are not going to stay unless things improve. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Eric Donovan.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Eric Donovan, I'm the chief operating officer at the Elmwood Park Zoo. I've been with the zoo for over nineteen years now. I'm a lifelong Montgomery County resident, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the zoo as Alzo, our executive director and CEO, is out of town. So I'd like to present a statement on the zoo's behalf. In the past five years, the zoo has seen an increased population of homelessness on and around our property. Elmwood Park Zoo occupies twenty-two acres of land across the creek from our current footprint. This is land we use for zip lines and numerous educational programs for nature play. It has cost us an abundant amount of time, energy, and resources to ensure that we do not have people camping out or loitering on zoo property due to liability and safety issues for everyone. We are here to support a solution that will protect our property, our guests, and our animals, while ensuring treating the homeless with the dignity, care, and respect that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Timothy Kozak.
Oh, undesirable, Tom, what a word. People have been using that word to demonize population throughout U.S. history. It's a terrible word to use, man. People are human beings, all right? So, I believe the Philadelphia Inquirer article, because I had a conversation with you about the Spanish-speaking community in Norristown. You told me they were all illegal immigrants. I said, "All of them, Tom?" You said, "Most of them." And until they come out of their houses and start voting, you didn't care. Marshall Street is, someone just said, Marshall Street is an incredible street in our town. It's economic engine. We just had a party the other day, we had people from Chester, PA, people from west mountain area, east mountain area, Germantown, throughout Philadelphia and the suburbs, and they love Norristown. Norristown's a great town. We moved here from Mount Arinees Falls. It's an incredible town. The zoo is an incredible place. The river is an incredible spot, the bike path, Norristown Farm Park. We moved here to Norristown because of the diversity. It was more affordable than Mount Arinees, because we were living there, like prices went through the roof. So, I don't know, I came here, and so I encourage, I guess Tom's going to give us all five-hundred-dollar gift cards, so we can go on a bus and support the homeless population, right? And all of you that sit here on city council and enable him as the president, I don't know if it's the money that it is, or what, but are you kidding me? And Tom, just so you remember, Joe Hill, the man who never died, did you ever read that book? You should read that book. It's about the start of the founding of the unions in this country. And just because you're a union member, you remember the roots. He talked to the homeless. He said you love Banksy, right? So Banksy came up with solutions. This is Banksy right here. So what this is, is people that came across the ocean from Africa, from the Middle East, migrants, no homes, homeless, they're on the shores in Europe. He came up with a plan. These are made of life vests. Life vests that don't even float. They sewed these, they sewed these, you can see the...
Thirty seconds, sir.
They sewed these as a program to make money for the homeless to live in camps on the shores of Europe. Are they undesirable, Tom? Thanks for your time.
Linda Smith.
Hi, I'm a longtime resident of Norristown, I've been here about thirty years. I just really want to remind all the council members that you were elected to represent all the constituents in Norristown, not just the well-to-do and not just the stately house. Your, the homeless people here are also constituents, and you represent them as well. I think we are at a turning point where we can choose to think of them as human beings and maybe turn ourselves around and seek the services they need and also make the county and other deplac- and other places that sent them here, the county that gave them tents to live here. But I wish all of you to remember that they're human beings. Thank you.
I can only read the first name. Mayeli, M-A-Y-E-L-I, maybe Chavez, I'm not sure.
Hi, everybody. My name is Mayeli Chavez. I'm resident here for six years ago. I'm the owner of the business ice cream shop for 42 West Marshall. And the reason still here is I put in my table in the outside and sell something like for the, I had a problem for the pandemic and like don't sell too much. And when you put in my table outside, I sell more. And then I had a problem that a bureau I stay coming for every week. And I don't know what's the problem. And when you come, I give it from one paper. When you come to the office, the bureau, I say, I don't know, only for one day. I don't know what the reason, need help on something.
Okay, so many of them Latino businesses suffering from pandemic because they don't get the money that other businesses got. So we are trying to organize all the business. She represented the Norristown Latino Business Coalition. That is not part of any chambers because they don't get Latinos. Like, our president here refuses to be in one of our meetings. So we invite him, when I call him, everybody was waiting for him there for his support in every chore. He said he was busy taking care of his son. So seeing that was very disrespectful. So we decide to organize ourselves and we couldn't get the support. So like a few weeks ago and weekends, the bureau come out with these letters to our people who sell in Marshall Street specifically and handle it. Sunday is in English and nobody translates to them. So they have to call me, I was on vacation and they call me to ask for help, for support. So just it come last week and everybody have to go to the bureau and fill a paper. Paper that the person in front of the store, they don't know. We need to go to the fire department. So I went to the fire department. They said, "They don't know, so send it back to the board." So they have sent us to Rosie from the police department. She doesn't know. So now we find out they just given a permission for, unpermitted for one day. So they sell every weekend. I know that's not ideal as I know there are, you can say like, "Okay, if you do this in your country, go back to your country and do it there." But they are here and they are of business owners and they just put a table outside of their business. So that was very, very harmful for them to, they don't, she speak English, but other who sell food over there, they don't. So and they don't have the plan. They don't have what they need. They don't tell them anything. So that was the reason that she's coming today to say that she's selling every day there and she's not going to stop. So if I know it's free, they don't have to charge, but at least teach them how to do it. They have to feel it. They have to be in Spanish, how they have to do it.
Four or three minutes, so please wrap it.
So that's it. That is for, then we need clarification on these letters. And we invite you, Thomas, again, to be part of our meeting because that was really disrespectful. I'm still very insulted that they didn't ever show up and everybody was sitting there. We're 30 businesses, Latino businesses, new businesses, people who selling houses. So we need to, your help, your support. We are not here to war against you. We need to work together for this. We are 35% Latino here.
I apologize for missing that meeting. I was at prior obligation with my son. And if Mr. Jones here will clarify on the issue at a later time with the tables. Thank you.
Is it, do we see?
Ask me.
Okay.
Okay, this is another issue. My name is Denise and the executive director of Unides para servir Norristown is a new organization, nonprofit, in 335 West Marshall Street, right across Amundo de Piastas, Amelie Bakery and two blocks, Acclamos. Because everybody know Acclamos, nobody know us. So the reason I'm here is this because we met with one of the event coordinators from the bureau. So she handed me this calendar. And we know Norristown is diverse, very diverse. So I want you to see this calendar. Where is the diversity of here? So we in Norristown celebrate first Latino, we celebrate 4th of July. Last year, a pack of more than 500 people celebrate 4th of July. So we celebrate Central America Independence Day, September 15. We celebrate the Héroe de Guadalupe with the caravana de more than 200 cars at night. We celebrate Day of the Dead, so Halloween. And where is it here? So they know we are here. I'm just, I'm here to just, I can say like, please see us. So I'm very insulted with this calendar. And she invited me to be a sponsor and she asked me for like 500 just for my logo on it. So I met with her. My expectation, I have about doing a partnership. And her email said that she cannot do it because the administrator said that they are not in the budget. But how about this is in the budget? They're in the budget. Then in two weeks, they're going to celebrate Juneteenth and we celebrate Father's Day. We have a lot of celebration around. So 4th of July, last year, you can see, nobody was in June parade. But the day before, the Marshall was full of people. So and they're going to have a taste in Norristown. How, we're going to taste taco? Where are we going to taste taco? So come on, be real. I'm the executive director of the organization, who always asks for donations, always invite you to work together, but nobody wants to work with me. Nobody wants to work with the organization because we are not here. So the Latinos are here and we continue. So it's going to be our second year and we want to continue. Come here with the Latino Norristown Coalition, with bosses, a new radio we have. I asked you to include us in this calendar, at least one celebration. Thank you.
David McMahon.
Hi, I'm David McMahon. I live at 731 Hollis Avenue. You all wanted to be here in some capacity, either for Anne for office, sometimes twice. Sometimes you had opponents, sometimes you didn't. Somebody filled out job applications to be here, right? Had interviews. You all wanted to be here. You've all elected your leadership. You know, there's seven of you who are council members. The current situation, and believe me, I'm going to have plenty of heat for commissioners too when this comes, okay? But I am sick to death of people with genuine political power pretending there's nothing they can do about things, okay? If your solution is to go after people who are trying to mitigate some of the worst harms, right, that are created by this housing crisis, it just means you don't have a game plan or have to take on actual power, okay? And you're just punching down, right? We've all seen this come for a long time, long-term problem. I've been here for a long time. I've been in Philly for a long time. I was born in Mayfair, grew up in Lower Bucks, lived in Philly most of my adult life. I've been here for about 10 years, okay? I've been around, right? There are answers. With all due respect, to love, that's a necessary component. We have to build on that. But we also have to understand that the affordability crisis in the housing market is the fact that it's a market, okay? And we are using a profit-driven distribution method to meet people's essential needs. And everything that's happening here in this town, in Norristown, is a direct result of that foreseeable, predictable. The county is a real problem and I'm with you on that, okay? But it's not true that there's nothing that you all here do not have in your power to take some steps towards, okay? There are things, you know, this is research. This is research I've just kind of done as a person interested in some of these topics. And this happens across like a lot of different subjects for me as well. But the information's out there. And how do you disconnect the profit-seeking value where we have speculators, rent seekers, predators coming in here trying to cheat people out of their homes, you know, with cash buys and all this kind of stuff? This is all predictable stuff that there can be actions taken against, okay? There could be things like a community land trust. It can be a housing trust fund that keeps seniors in their homes and keeps them independent, okay? It can be things like a different proportion of the land value tax to the property value tax that helps mitigate some of the ratables chase. We have a vibrant Marshall Street that gets stiff-armed repeatedly while subsidy money gets dumped into trying to make Main Street happen. We need more Marshall Streets, okay? We need an analysis where we're seeing like the per acre value of what some of these different places are generating, okay? And in lieu of regular reliable mass transit that one of our commissioners, who's also on SEPTA, is not providing, we can have satellite offices for services. A lot can be demanded. But I also don't see a lot of you at the local Democratic Committee meetings where this is where we build power, where we can get some demands met by the county. And that's part of this, and that's part of this fight too. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Mike Hayes.
Good evening, everybody. Mike Hayes with the Monco 30% Project. Members of council, you should call off the future sweeps tonight. Being poor should not feel like a crime. But for those who receive notice from PICO and from the police, it sure does. So we have a lot of search and produce agencies that have been distributing tents to the unhoused, right? I encourage Montgomery County to issue detailed maps of acceptable, safe locations for people to use those tents and lay their heads for now. The county could have these printed by the end of the week. Let's take a step back for a moment. We find ourselves in a dire situation. In 2023, in the second wealthiest county in Pennsylvania, we have a rising eviction rate and a critical lack of affordable housing. And according to the eviction lab, Norristown has an eviction rate of 14%. 14%, that's 14 per 100 renters. That's twice as high as the city of Philadelphia. The list of causes are long and complex. COVID-19, flat wages, educational disparities, opioids and a drop-off in new construction, especially in units sold below market rates. We must do better. We cannot and should not wish these people out of existence. These are Montgomery County residents who deserve basic respect, regardless of where they once lived. I don't care if they came from Abington. They're here now. Solutions for complex issues are never easy. We must open alternative short-term shelters for our homeless that operate 12 months a year, especially given the closure of Chalk last summer. They don't absolutely need to be in Norristown or Pottstown. They need to be fairly distributed throughout the county. I agree. Longer term, I encourage you to support low-income housing tax credit developments and pass an inclusionary housing ordinance. The last point would require that developers set aside a small percentage of units at below-market rates. Neither of these concepts have anything to do with public housing or Section 8, even though I don't consider either of those to be a four-letter word. In closing, I can understand your frustration on council. As members of council, you want a thriving and safe downtown for business and leisure. In addition, you want a healthy tax rolls and budgets that allow for ambitious planning. You are accountable to all of your residents. That much I understand. Furthermore, yes, all 62 municipalities in Montgomery County ought to work with great speed to help develop more affordable housing and enough with the NIMBYism. We need to think about the greater good, about having a mix of housing that supports all income levels. You can pursue this in concert with revitalization. That's the only way we can all thrive in this beautiful county. Thank you.
Kajor.
Hello, council. How's everybody doing tonight?
Hi.
Local resident, 25 years, local business owner. I'm in the process of opening another business in town, right on Main Street. I want to thank you first off because I think what you meant to do was sensationalize the topic and get everybody in the room. I've been going to Chamber of Commerce meetings and I've attended Main Street initiative meetings. Finally, we have people, they've come together and said, "Okay, there is a situation. We need to handle this crisis and now how do we move forward?" So I want to thank you for bringing that finally, that attention and that spotlight here. Whatever means was necessary, the greater good is done here. So again, as a local resident, local business owner, I think we all realize this is an issue. There's a problem. Let's sit down and figure out how to solve it now. I think by attacking people and figuring this, nothing's going to happen overnight. Trust me, I've been to several of these kind of meetings, not just in Norristown, throughout the country. There's no quick, simple answer here. It's a crisis. It's an American crisis. It's not just America, it's a global crisis. So we just need to sit down. Calm our minds, need to prevail. How do we help people that are, they're all people, right? We're all humans at the end of the day. So how do we move forward and help people get what they need to sustain a better life and move forward? So I want to thank council for the time today. But again, I want to thank you again for bringing the attention to the matter. As a local business owner, I've lived in, I live in Norristown as well. We appreciate you bringing this to the, you know, the forefront. And I look forward to seeing some great solutions with all the members and people in this room helping with that. Thank you.
Steve, is it Chris Nick?
Griswold.
Griswold?
My name is Steve Griswold. This is Zuro. I'm the executive director and founder of an organization of 516 cities called Mission Philadelphia. Our vision that we start on July 4th, 2020 was ending hunger and homelessness in Philadelphia by July 4th, 2026 in time for the Sessos Centennial. If we put the articles aside, the opening comments of the president, I thought, were 99% outstanding and positive. The use of the word undesirables is a word you should never utter in public discourse. It does dehumanize people. So that's just a suggestion, okay? Mission Philadelphia has five pillars. Hunger, housing, enrollment, getting Medicaid and SNAP, recovery for substance, as well as mental health and prosperity. It includes education, it includes reentry, it includes many other areas to provide a holistic answer. I will echo something that a number of people have said. This is not, homelessness is not a Norristown problem. It's not a Montgomery County problem. It's not a Pennsylvania problem. It's not a national, federal problem. It's all of our problems. And the only way we're going to solve this, and you go back, homelessness really started en masse in the 80s when they closed down most of the state hospitals, okay? Byberry, et cetera, et cetera, and decided that we're going to throw these people on the street. And yes, many homeless have drug issues. Many homeless have mental health issues. They can't fend for themselves, all right? They need treatment, all right? So recovery is one of the five pillars. Not the only pillar, all right? I want to bring a thought to you. Today's D-Day. There's no one in this room who I believe was around when I was born, 70 years ago. Do you know the federal government spends $800 billion a year on defense, which is more than the next 10 countries in the world? 40% of all the funds money spent in the world is spent in America. Yet Department of Defense spends less than one-half of 1% on homeless veterans.
30 seconds.
We'll spend $600 million on a plane and build 100 of them. But God forbid, we should allocate to help the veterans. The veterans make up around 10% of the homeless population nationally. Maybe more or less in Philadelphia, Norristown, whatever. If you guys really want to do something different, not the same old stuff, insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. The only way to solve it is collaboration. Everyone in this room, okay? Also at the state level and the national level. I'll give you my name and email address. I encourage you to go to missionphiladelphia.org. That's our website. While our effort is primarily spent in Philadelphia, a lot of the food that we deliver gets distributed through all the organizations in Montgomery County. About 59 years, 50 of those years have lived in Shelbyham Township and LaMurray Township. I did live in Philadelphia at the time. This is not a city problem, a state problem, a county problem. This is everyone's problem. Everyone's got to chip in, all right? But the Norristown problem, that leadership has to start in Norristown. I will help any way I can to help you solve this problem. But it's got to be getting Josh Shapiro involved, the county commissioners involved, your... your U.S. representatives and senators involved.
Sir, you have 4 minutes, if you could please stretch it.
All right. So, okay, I have an outreach at Love Park I need to get to, and Zuro is the comfort animal. So I'll give you my information, and I thank you for your time.
Jane Pico? Pecot?
Hello, I shouldn't, uh, need a ton of time. I, so again, I'm Jane Pico. I wanted to speak to Council President Tom LaPera. So my first real impression of you, sir, was from those articles that came out. As they say, you know, first impressions are lasting impressions, and my, you know, I would venture a guess that a lot of people's first impressions of you came from those articles. It's unfortunate if you say the reporters distorted your views. My, I do have a question though, a clarifying question. I learned that, you know, I guess you're not probably required.
Is there a question in the church, it's time for comments?
To respond, sure. I guess, well, my comment is that, you know, in order for me to wrap my head around all this, process this, and move forward with my life, I'm going to need more info on this $500 gift card idea. You know, this potential bribe to get the unhoused onto buses. I, I, my, I want to know whether this was completely fabricated by the reporter, who, you know, I assume has a very wild imagination, if so. And I just feel that, you know, if not, if, you know, that we're being gaslighted essentially, or gaslit, we're being, you know, lied to, and then it just doesn't seem like we could then believe the municipality when they say, oh, there's actually no plans for sweeps, or, and there never have been any plans for sweeps of the unhoused in the encampments. So yeah, I just wanted to, you know, the bonds of trust have been broken, and I wanted to point that out.
If you leave your email address, number, surely I can get in contact with you to clarify all that.
John Fennell.
Good evening, everyone, John Fennell. 20 East Screw Street in Norristown, I'm a homeowner. I've worked in government for a couple of years now, first in this town as a director of community outreach for former Senator Daylon Leach. So I've worked with Tommy and the Borough, and Heather, and many of the people up here on some of these issues facing the community. But I'm up here as a resident. And that's because, I heard this when I first got to town, and I thought it was NIMBYism myself, but as a resident who pays taxes, high taxes, high taxes, I'm a little upset that all, as the council president mentioned, that all of the resources are being put into Norristown, the homeless center, or homeless shelter. Now, that homeless shelter wasn't just a homeless shelter for Montgomery County, as I understand it, homeless shelter for the collar counties. So the collar counties and people who don't live in Norristown are able to sit back and enjoy the fact that they don't have homeless in their neighborhoods. They can put the pressure, they can put the problem into our lap, into my lap, and the other homeowners and taxpayers, it's in our lap. So we're subsidizing your healthy living. That ain't right! So I don't appreciate, I'll be honest, I don't appreciate seeing some people come into my town where I just bought a house, and then months into buying this house, funny story. You know this story, you know this story because Tommy helped me. Funny story, after moving into my house. I lived in the borough for a while. I wake up, I come out, and there's a five-gallon bucket filled of feces from the homeless encampments in town was dumped into my yard. I have no problem with the homeless people in the community. I have worked to help the community. But I am now subsidizing your lifestyles. I'm subsidizing your ability to sit there and say, you know what, we need a homeless shelter. Yeah, that homeless shelter's in my neighborhood. When the other municipalities bring homeless into our municipality to be dropped off at a homeless shelter and they don't stay, they're now in our communities. They're in our communities where my nephew is playing in the streets. I'm not, this isn't me being against them. I'm asking all y'all, Tommy's right, excuse me, council president's right. Y'all need to put your mouths where your money, where your mouths are, because my money is already there. I'm paying for all of y'all to live the good life. So you know what? You guys, and that's what he's saying, you guys take on the responsibility too. You guys open up your townships to accept the shelters. Thank you, that's all I got.
Anna Santoyo.
Hi. Can you go, um, must I? Yes. I'd rather not, thank you. My name is Anna Santoyo, and I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I live in Norristown, right off Elmwood Park, and I love the neighborhood. I am on the board of the Hospitality Center. I volunteered at the Code Blue Shelter with Chalk and with the Soup Kitchen. I provided free mobile therapy to members of the Montgomery County. I'm a member of the restorative Norristown. And I really appreciate being here and hearing all of your views. So I want to say that housing for all is possible. And we can achieve this by coming together, doing the research, and developing the creative policies and practices needed to do this. It is possible. And what we should do, and what I'm recommending, the solution, is to get a committee, get a work group from members of the Leadership Academy, graduates of the Leadership Academy, like myself and others who are here, to come together and develop the policies and practices needed to clean up Norristown, to provide housing for all, and to make sure that we're all part of the solutions. And please give me a call, and I'd be happy to support this action. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This required of you, if you're going to make a public comment, we ask you to come forward here. The reason why we ask you to come forward here, as you see those microphones here, those are preserved for record and our minutes and for our live stream. So just understand why we're asking people to come forward. Thank you very much.
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you all for coming and for that public comment. And Heather Lewis, you want to, you want to say something? I'm sorry, vice president.
So I had a lot of notes, and I initially had a lot to say, but I think the community has said most of it. And I appreciate everyone's willingness to come together and address this situation. I have been 20 years in nonprofit, 20 years working with vulnerable populations, and I was at the table, I voted nay, but I was at the table when they dismantled all of the housing programs that were working, all the transitional housing programs that were available to folks that were struggling, that needed to transition from not having income into stepping up and being stably housed. They have since dismantled all of those programs. And now 211, which is an automated system, is receiving people who are vulnerable, who are struggling, who have mental health issues and/or drugs or substance abuse disorders that can't manage or navigate the 211 system. After you make it through 211, your needs assessment is done via rubric. So when people are looking at us and vilifying Norristown to want better, that's what the county has determined to be better. A call center and a rubric that determines people's needs. Not other human beings determining people's needs. A rubric that you put in, you get a score, and that determines whether or not you get assistance. So let me put that out there. Council President LaPera is not the only council person that can answer your call, that can come to a meeting. There are seven of us. Yes, he is the president, but he has one vote. So there are seven people on this council that share the same power that he does, and I'm not belittling his power, but we all have the same thing. We talk to each other. So if Tommy needs something, he can call me. If I need something, I can call Councilwoman Henley, or Rebecca, or Lauren, any of us. So Tommy is not the only one. You have seven people at your disposal. There were some things talking, I think Dave talked about some private property and trying to control. I know I'm a homeowner in Norristown, David's a homeowner, there's several homeowners here in Norristown. Pretty sure you don't want us coming and telling you what you can charge, what you can do with your property. So when you look at us saying that we have that power, we absolutely do not and will not exercise eminent domain over anybody's property. So that's right. I agree with everyone, this is a basic human right. It's not an us, it's an us problem as a human race. So this thing goes way above us, and so I believe that wholeheartedly. We never said that we were doing a sweep, so not sure where she went. The news article was absolutely incorrect, and Councilman, Council President LaPera was misquoted because I was lied to by the same reporter trying to get information. So, you know, we put our trust in certain people blindly, without knowing. So I, and I'd say 95% of these people that are in this room I've never seen before. We have council meetings the first and third Tuesday of every month. This, only when we have an issue like this do people come out, or we have a swearing-in. And guess what? After the swearing-in, this place empties out like nobody's business, like we ran out of food. So, thank you. So it's imperative that you come to these meetings and make public comment, and get to know who your council people are. We were told before, oh, now we're superstars because we're on council, that you're afraid to contact me. These are literally my friends, people I grew up with, my neighbors. Now all of a sudden I'm on council, you don't know me? You're afraid to call me? Like, I don't understand that. So just like we have rights and responsibilities, so do you as community members. If you see something going on. Amrender has done a fabulous job of opening up the website that you can put a complaint directly into the website, and you will get real-time results of what's actually happening. Take advantage of it. We have created so many resources for our community to be actively engaged, and every month, we have a handful of people, and it'd be the same handful of people. I love Mr. Waters. He comes here and tells me stuff that I've never heard before. He is consistent with loving and showing the loving care for Norristown and the Norristown residents. So I look for you all to be here at least once a month, and sharing in the same efforts and the same struggles that we have as council.
Thank you.
And just to end on that, yes, I've had eight years on council. I mentioned I was 20 years in nonprofit, so this is nothing new. But I'm grateful for Council President LaPera for initiating the call. However it was received, however it was perceived, you all answered in one way, shape, or form. And so I'm challenging everyone that had the passion to come here tonight, that can keep that same energy when we're actually putting solutions into place.
Thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda, where we're going to have a public hearing and final adoption of ordinance number 23-04 Municipal Stormwater Management Ordinance Revisions to Chapters 26, 276. Could I have a motion to open up the public hearing?
So moved.
Public hearing is now open.
Sure. Public hearing on, uh, public hearing on stormwater ordinance. I'm going to go ahead and mark some exhibits to the record. T1 will be a copy of the advertisement of this, of this public hearing. T2 will be a copy of the ordinance. T3 will be all comments related to this ordinance from our various planning bodies. I was not sure if, who was exactly going to speak. Randall?
Thank you. Council, as you know, we have gotten permission from you in previous meetings to advertise the changes to the stormwater ordinance and make these necessary revisions. The majority of those revisions are mandated by changes in state law. And so most of this is housekeeping with language and changes mandated by state law. Our municipal engineer, Cal Hassan, is here and can share with you some of the information around these changes, if you like. But as I said, they're primarily text changes, and some things added for inspection, waivers, repairing buffers, et cetera. Cal, I'll turn it over to you to elaborate more.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Good evening, everybody. Just to make sure I capture everything, since this is a pretty important topic, I have prepared a written executive summary of the stormwater management ordinance before you tonight. Just a little background on how we got to this point. The municipality of Norristown currently has a stormwater ordinance that was adopted under the Pennsylvania Stormwater Management Act of 1978, also known as Act 167. Act 167 requires each county to prepare a watershed stormwater management plan for each watershed located in the county as designated by the Department of Environmental Protection, the DEP. In consultation with the municipalities located within each watershed, a must periodically review and revise such plans at least five, every five years. The municipality of Norristown adopted and codified the Act 167 Plan on December 29th, 1992 by ordinance number 92-33, which became the Norristown Stormwater Management Ordinance Code. Please note that the stormwater management ordinance was last updated on December 19th, 2006. So what is before you tonight? In 2022, the PADP, Department of Environmental Protection, updated the stormwater model ordinance for municipalities to adopt, updates the current stormwater ordinance as part of the MS4 protocol and permitting requirements. Me and my team had reviewed this model ordinance, and we are proposing the following changes in accordance with the model ordinance that was handed down to the municipality and other municipalities by the Department of Environmental Protection. One of the changes is tax change. Some missing in additional terminologies to the definition section was adjusted and modified. We added specific sections for inspections, waivers, repairing buffers, calculation formulas for stormwater management to be consistent with the language of the model ordinance that was handed down to us by the DEP. We lowered the impervious coverage limit from 2,000 square feet of new impervious coverage to 300 square feet to be consistent with the limit of applicable stormwater fee. Combined the MS4 ordinance with Act 167 Swamp Creek Ordinance, so that there is only one stormwater management ordinance, not multiple, that projects and individuals have to comply with. And lastly, we modified the design for stormwater requirements for upstream watershed to include drought in for the 100-year storm, not for the 25-year storm. And the reason being is so we can avoid and prevent any downstream flooding. In essence, this is pretty much what's before you tonight. Most municipalities have passed this ordinance, and this is what's before council tonight. I'll answer any questions you have for me.
Council, any questions? Any public comment?
I'm sorry, I have to say your name.
You have to come up and state your name and answer.
If you answer them, okay.
Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Guys have it. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 23-04?
So moved.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Lauren Hughes?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. Guys have it, ordinance passes. Moving on, Resolution 23-37, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council Resolution 23-37 is a request of council to appreme the change orders that total $63,987 from the prime contractor for construction for modifications of the sprinkler system in municipal hall. Essentially, as the system was initially designed, there were two areas that, in review, we needed to go back and have modified from the original specifications. And those had to do with the sprinkler system that was And those had to do with the sprinkler system that was in the electrical rooms and in the IT rooms. They had actually specified for water sprinklers in those places, which would be the worst thing to happen in those two places. So this adds the modified sprinkler heads and also provides for a clean agent dry system should there be a fire to happen in those rooms to protect municipal assets and not have water make a fire situation even worse on the municipality. And because this exceeds the 15% limit that authority that manager has to do that, we wanted to bring it to council for your consent.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 23-37?
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Lauren Hughes?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. Guys have it. Resolution passes. Moving on to Resolution 23-38.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution 23-38, again, in alignment with the renovations over at Municipal Hall. We had, council had approved with Resolution 2112, an original contract of $89,400 for abatement of hazardous material, lead and asbestos within the building. Was discovered at the latter parts as we near the end of this, that there was also hazardous material in the steps that make up the two tower stairs in the building, both asbestos and lead paint. And so that needed to be taken care of. The change order for that was $29,800, again exceeding the 15% limit to have that abated, and then we needed to get council approval to do that.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Vice President?
Does this impact our timeline at all?
No. No.
That's my follow-up question.
No, we're still looking at July. And we actually have a beginning to move in furniture in the building, June 16th is the first day. We start doing some furniture, moving back into the building.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 23-38?
So moved.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Lauren Hughes?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. The eyes have it. Resolution passes. Moving on to Resolution 23-39.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council, again, in the vein of we're closing out this building, this request is for council to approve some value-added engineering services that we requested from Sila Drury, who is architect of the building. The original contract we had for Sila Drury was $117,830 for professional services. We also had an alternate item listed in that contract should we need it for additional services. We did have a need to do that in various areas. One, for Sila Drury to work with audiovisual and IT vendors in terms of concept design planning to establish a final approved budget for those. That was $18,000 of this. Two, there needed to be Sally Port roof construction revisions made for the new Sally Port that was in port, that was put in. Three revisions, we actually had worked, both myself and the municipal engineer and our construction manager worked with Sila Drury to try to reduce costs from some of the original quotes that we got. Specifically, some of the interior finishes, the cost of getting those reductions and revisions to the specs for that was $1,860. Renovations to reduce the lighting costs and go to a less expensive lighting package. The cost of doing that for the building was $5,670. We needed to construct a temporary ramp for the main door. That was $915. The elevator shaft issue was a really big, major issue for us, and we ended up changing manufacturers. The workaround net was $2,100. And then, as you may recall, we had in the original design of the new building that there would be shelter in place, a room for shelter in place on each of the floors, should there be some issue that required that. And we needed Sila Drury to actually produce the shelter in place plan and documents for the police department. So the total of all of that was $36,545.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 23-39?
So moved.
A second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Lauren Hughes?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. The eyes have it. Resolution passes. Moving on to Resolution 23-40.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last one on the building this month. This is related to a problem that has been really a years-long problem at Municipal Hall, and that was a challenge for the police department. As you know, in their old plan, they operated exclusively out of basement of the building. In the new plan, they're going to occupy the main floor and the basement of the building. And our building always had challenges for the police in terms of IT and phone connectivity inside the basement especially. And so one of the things, improvements, we wanted to add to make sure that there would not be any connectivity issues for police, was to have some work done by system solutions for network equipment in Municipal Hall. And the cost of doing so is $23,252.60, which again is above the municipal administrator's authorized cost, and wanted to bring it to council for approval.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 23-40?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Lauren Hughes?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. The eyes have it. Resolution passes. Moving on to Resolution 23-41.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution 23-41 is a resolution recognizing June 23 as LBG, LBGTQ plus Pride Month in the municipality. The municipality has typically done this over the last several years, and we certainly want to bring it back for the council for your consideration.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 23-40?
So moved.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Lauren Hughes?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. The eyes have it. Resolution passes. Moving on to Resolution 23-42.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council Resolution 23-42 is a request of council approval for an intent to award letter to Guardian S.J. Thomas Company, Inc., and Merco Engineering Contractors with a subcontractors in the amount of $235,920 for repair of the Crawford Park Pearl Street retaining wall. As council knows, we had bid that out before, and as we were having discussions with the Crawford Park Foundation, those discussions were taking too long for them to give us approval to go in and do the work, and the initial vendor who was awarded the contract walked away because of his own scheduling issues. So council then authorized us to use the Keystone, Pennsylvania Keystone process to get vendors to do the work. Our municipal engineer led that process, and I'll let him talk about what's happening there. But I do want to let you know that he did a remarkable job. When we first got the first quote from the Keystone process, it was actually twice what we had bid before, we had gotten bid before. But you all know Cal as a very sweet and gentle man. He was very unsweet and tenacious in getting that down within our budget. And Cal, I'll turn that on.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Good evening again, counsel. So what you see before you tonight is a very acceptable proposal that was submitted, as Mr. Jones had mentioned. It really took a lot of effort because we went through several processes to get to this point. Number one is we wanted to make sure that the scope is the scope, it's not being tampered with. Our goal was not just to reduce the cost, we want to make sure that the actual scope is maintained throughout the process. After several discussions and negotiations, we did receive a very favorable bid, which you see before you tonight, in the amount of $23,000, sorry, $235,920. The scope of the work is, this is for the Crawford Park wall. The wall surface is going to be cleaned from any vegetation. Any loose material is going to be removed. Anchors are going to be placed into the wall, and then the face, the facade of the wall is going to be structurally stable with shot concrete, material that would spray along the surface. This should take care of the structural issues that we currently see, and it will address the problem as we move forward. If council is so inclined, this is a very good proposal, and it is for your consideration tonight.
Thank you. Will Pearl Street open up as soon as the work?
Yes.
Can I just ask, can you indulge me, Crandall, since we have an audience? Can you talk about the issues that we've had with Crawford Park, the foundation, and the safety hazard, and what we had to do to get to this point, since we have a lovely audience today?
Absolutely. So as council knows, we actually had to close that road down because of the instability of the road wall. And the road is above, Pearl Street is above the Crawford Park, Crawford Park, which is owned by the Crawford Park Foundation.
Not Norristown?
Not Norristown. It's owned by the Crawford Park Foundation. So as we were seeking, and we realized, as our police chief had let us know, that not only could trash trucks not go down, heavy vehicles go down the road for quite some time, should there be a fire, we could not run fire trucks down the road. And so that's why it became essential that we get this done. Council allocated money from the ARPA funds that we got to be able to accomplish that. And as we were negotiating getting that work done, we had to get the approval of the Crawford Park Foundation to actually enter onto their property to do it because there's no way to fix the wall unless you're on their property. And unfortunately, they were not receptive to us doing that. And as we spent time negotiating from that first bid, the contractor couldn't wait any longer, and they're forcing us to have to put it out for bid and delay the health safety issue even further. And so now we ultimately ended up having to have court action discussion to be able to do that. I will say that their solicitor has been working very well with our solicitor and understands the nature of the situation. It's the foundation itself that was the challenge. So I think we've worked it out. It looks like that they're going to allow us to go on and do the work in the time that we needed to get done. And hopefully, I think it's by end of August, we're looking to have this completed.
So the plan is, the project timeline is about 45 on the low side to 60 days on the high side. This is from the time of notice to proceed. So as soon as we issue notice to proceed, we'll sit down, we'll meet with the contractor and all involved parties, and we'll make sure that they hit the ground running.
Thank you.
I'm sure the residents in that area will be eternally grateful for your efforts so that they can actually feel safe that fire trucks can come rescue them if something were to happen.
They can drive on it.
Have their trash removed. Thank you, Cal.
Counsel, any other questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 23-42?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Lauren Hughes?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. The eyes have it. Resolution passes. Moving on, Building and Code Compliance, the Historical Architectural Review Board of May 2023. Mr. Singh?
Thank you, President LaPera. Counsel, before you, is a request to approve or deny the Historical Architectural Review Board applications, which were reviewed and recommended for approval by HARB for May 2023. As you all know, the Norristown HARB receives applications on a monthly basis for exterior repairs and renovations for properties located in Norristown's historic districts. Those applications are reviewed by the HARB members to confirm that the repair or renovation work is in compliance with our municipal ordinance. The Historical Architectural Review Board has reviewed the applications and have approved either as submitted or modified, as mentioned on the certificate of appropriateness, the following properties: 47 East Tacoby Street, 118-120 East Main Street, 311 West Marshall Street, 800 West Main Street, 1021 West Main Street, 1023 West Main Street, 1215 DeKalb Street, 1339 DeKalb Street. And council, the request before you is to approve the COAs as recommended by HARB. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the HARB Board of May 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Tiffany Henley?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Lauren Hughes?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye. The eyes have it. Motion passes. Moving on to departmental reports. We'll start off with Chief Bishop.
Thank you, Council President. Counsel, in May, we're in a really good position this time of year to have an annual decrease in crime. Right now, we're at 10% decrease for the year from last year. This is doing no small part to the work of all the patrol members, staying proactive in the designated hotspots and continuing with what we asked them to do. We've seen the crime decrease every month this year except from February, and in May, the Norristown Police responded to 3,974 calls for service, which was an 11% increase over last year, mostly due to increased activity by the police. Some of the highlights that I've seen, we have an 80% reduction in homicides, an 86% reduction in shootings, a 36% reduction in shots fired, which equates to a 52% decrease in gun violence over last year, a 30% reduction in thefts from vehicles, 34% reduction in robberies, 16% reduction in burglaries, 12% reduction in thefts, and a 7% reduction in aggravated assaults. So the only concern I'm seeing right now is the tick-tock challenge with stolen vehicles, which is something new. To help combat that, we just took a new shipment of free steering wheel locks at the police station that's available to any member or resident of Norristown. You just have to show proof of residency and that they own the type of car that's affected, come down to the borough hall and pick one up.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to fire Chief O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Your operational summary for the Fire Department. We had 100 calls for service. Year-to-date is 442. Average response time year-to-date is 4 minutes and 28 seconds. Our busiest timeframe is Thursday at 7:00 PM. Departmental training classes for the year-to-date is 479 were conducted. The department training hours was 2,059 for the year. So far this year, we had two firefighter injuries, one civilian injury, and zero civilian fatalities. 175 commercial fire inspections were conducted. We held 94 public education events. We visited 541 homes to install smoke detectors, of which 142 smoke and carbon monoxide detectors were installed thus far this year. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to code. Mr. Singh?
Thank you, President LaPera. For May 2023, code operations include performing 329 exterior property inspections to ensure compliance with property maintenance standards. 329 tickets were issued. Year-to-date, 1,241. Regarding building permits, we issued 141 building permits in the month of May. Year-to-date, we are at 595. Rental inspections, 38 housing units were inspected. Year-to-date, 1,008. And 73 property transfer inspections were completed. Year-to-date, 384. And the department is currently working on filling three vacant positions, one permit stack, and two code compliance inspectors.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel, any questions?
There's a quick question. Are the citations actually being paid or the work being done and, or are they being upheld in the district courts?